Well, welcome everyone to our first meeting in 2021. This is my first meeting as board president. Well, actually, I had sort of a very short role right before we broke, but this is sort of the first business-type meeting. So, welcome everyone. And I do want to say I am super impressed at all that Janet Lawson did last year because just getting ready for this meeting, I've now got three screens open or three monitors and lots of different screens and ready to go. I may need some assistance and some patience from our audience tonight, but I'm sure we'll get through this together. So, let's see, we have posted in the chat and I can post it again now since you may not see it, the board agenda as well as a speaker card. So if you'd like to speak on any agenda item tonight, please fill out the speaker card. We'd like for you to try to do that in the first 15 minutes. That way we can close the speaker card form and sort of know how many comments we have for the meeting coming up. And let's see, if you have an item that you wish to address that is not in the agenda, you will be called during oral communication. And if the item is on the agenda, you will be called on when that item is being addressed. And if you don't know exactly which agenda item is, we can usually figure it out for you. But if you could try to put the agenda item, that's helpful. All right, let's see. So I would like to take a moment and acknowledge that we have heard from a number of community members in the past who are upset when we have a lack of civility during public comments at recent meetings. And I think, you know, the week that we've just had as a country has been tumultuous and really shows how important it is for us to be respectful and have a dialogue and listen to one another. And I am very proud of the district and how we have operated. And this is democracy in action. And I'm hopeful that we can continue to work as a community and come together and do what's right for all of us in the community. So, we would appreciate that when you make comments, if you can try to keep them to facts and keep respectful, that would be helpful. And try not to be hurtful to others. We would appreciate that as well. All right, in the same manner, the chat feature is open for members of the public. I had to ask a clarifying question or make a short comment to the panelists. I would ask that you please not use the chat box for ongoing conversation or commentary. In a normal board meeting, if we were all sitting in the boardroom downtown, this would not be a communication option. So if this feature is abused or becomes too distracting for board members, we will have to turn off the chat feature. But actually, I will say, I feel like the November and December meetings have gone really well. So I am confident that we'll be able to continue to keep the chat function open and have a good meeting tonight. Alrighty, let's see. So that's kind of the welcome and to get us started. And let me pull up the agenda here. So, any changes to the agenda? Oh, thank you. I don't think that was on... Oh, yeah, sorry. All right, thank you, Janet. I appreciate any assistance I can get here. Okay, roll call, Eliana.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Vice President Deasilka.
Here.
President McAvoy.
Present. All right, thank you. And I do want to welcome our newest board member, Mike Wells. We're so happy to have you here. So, welcome tonight. Let's see, I can see you in the panel somewhere. There you are. All right, welcome. Okeydoke. So, any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, Ali, so we need to move 10.1 to action.
Right.
Because I was not a trustee for that board meeting.
Okeydoke. Any other changes to the agenda? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Oh, actually, you have to do a roll call vote, right?
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Deasilka.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. Just going to see real quick. Did you... Kyle, did you notice, do we have any? I'm looking to see if there's any oral communication.
There is one, there's another one that has, that's asking for item 9.1.
Okay.
We just have two speaker cards right now. There's nothing.
Right, right. So they're for later in the agenda. Okay, so no oral communication. Alrighty. Okay, so, one of the things that Dr. Baker and I talked about doing, starting off, kickstarting that 2021, is to start our meetings with a quick school community report. Kind of, I mean, sometimes we'll have a more lengthy report like we do, but we thought we would start with some student work or staff inspiration, something to kind of focus us on students and education and all the good work that we're doing. So tonight, we'd like to highlight the Kennedy Middle School Art Show. And did you want me to clear my screen or was someone ready? I can, you can do it?
I can bring it up right now. It's loading right now.
Okay. I've got it if you don't, but...
So I'm actually going to do it.
Okay, you're ready to go. So, why don't I go ahead and start? We do have the wonderful teacher from Kennedy, Mr. Silverman. I'm pretty sure he was going to be on the attendees tonight. And I did offer him to speak, but he said he's happy to answer any questions if people have questions. But I did want to honor and thank him for all the work that he does with the students at Kennedy for this amazing art show. And one of the great things about, you know, one of the silver linings of COVID is we are able to see things virtually. And as you can see, Kyle is running through some of the artwork that is online. And actually, I'm going to copy the link into the chat in case anybody wants to look at it later. And it's also in the board packet. But pretty amazing. I know when I went through it, I was very impressed with each of the students' work. And Cecilia or Janet or Mike, do any of your students have, any of your kids have an art piece in here?
My student is not in art this year.
Yeah, mine neither. Music, but not art this year.
We did have Mr. Silverman last year and Caleb really enjoyed it. And there are some great pieces that have come out of it. These are great. Really nice work.
Jesse says, "Oh, so sweet."
If he wants to say anything, he's welcome to.
Just sit by you, Linda.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, he's probably sitting right next to you, right, or he's in the other room.
He's in the other room. I can hear him. Oh, he says, "Thank you."
Oh, well, thank you so much. I mean, this is representative of what our teachers are able to accomplish even during a pandemic, even with distant learning. It's truly remarkable. And I am so impressed at the quality and the creativity of this artwork and that I was able to see it because, you know, one of the things, if we're live and in person, you might not be able to get down to the school site to see it. So, that's great. And we are getting some chat saying, "This is awesome." Let's see, what did that chat say that just comes to the board? "This is awesome. It brings so much meaning to the board meetings." Thank you. Yeah, because what are we here for, other than our students, really, at the end of the day, right?
Mr. Silverman, tell your students that they're extremely talented and we're very impressed.
Yeah, I mean, this is amazing. I watched it a couple of times since the link came out on Friday. And Elise and Dr. Baker, yeah, this is a great way to start my first real board meeting. I really appreciate it. It's just a reminder, you know, we've seen some of the music that's come through. You know, we've seen some of the principal messages that have come through with the other achievements in. And it's just, you know, it's a reminder that when the student's need is met, amazing things happen, right? And it's the effort of everybody at the district, from the teachers in the classroom, the families that are taking care of the caregivers for the kids, the community, the staff. It's just a great way to start the first one. Thank you.
You're welcome. Great idea. Elise brought this idea forward. It's a great idea. And I'm jealous. God, these kids are great.
I know. I want to go back to art class. All right, thank you, Kyle, for showcasing that. And thanks once again, teacher, Mr. Silverman. Really appreciate it. And thanks to all the students and the parents and community members for supporting our kids. All right, so, let's see. We have, the next is bond program consent items. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Deasilka.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, and there's no bond program action items. So I believe, Mr. Don Diaz, you are welcome to stay with us, but you're also welcome to rest up for another day or back to bond work. I do want to just say, and I know this is on behalf of all the board members, thank you for all you are doing. You know, it takes us hours just to review the summary of what you're doing, let alone the actual work. So it's so exciting. And I know once we're back all in person, we're going to be able to see all of this great work. So thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Thank you. It's, we have a great team and it's definitely exciting and we're almost there. We see the, we see the end. So, thank you very much.
Alrighty.
Alrighty.
And I think...
I love that artwork, by the way. That was just wonderful.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you so much. Okay, discussion items. On to 9.1, discussion on COVID-19. Dr. Baker.
Yes, thank you and good evening and happy new year to everyone. Before I start, I'm going to ask Wendy to share a screen for me because I have a few slides that I want to review with the board and the community. Since coming back on January 4th, the superintendents in San Mateo County have been quite busy and moving things along in regard to items regarding to COVID-19. And so, this evening, we're going to start in a couple of seconds with a piece on curative. This evening, we're going to talk about curative. We're going to talk about another rapid result antigen testing pilot that we're doing at two of our school sites. And then I'm going to talk about vaccines. And that is something that's on the top of everyone's mind along with definitely the COVID testing that we're doing. I may not be able to get my slides on.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Oh.
I was trying before the video, go, "Oh, God, it's not..."
I hope this happened last time. Oh, no. Just thank you for your patience. One more time.
No problem.
Okay, please tell me you can see it now.
I see the, you know, it's kind of the whiteboard.
Okay, it looks good on my side. Kyle, am I missing something? I can see everything like normal, so this is strange.
If you try ending the share and then resharing it and making sure that you select the...
The whiteboard. I did do that. It says your screen sharing is paused.
Oh, so you can then go back to the screen share again.
Okay, I'll try it again. Give me a second. Thank you, everyone. Sorry about this. We had it up and running, ready to go. These things happen, I guess. Okay. I feel so commensurate to teachers who have these moments. Okay, try one more time, whiteboard.
Nope.
Okay, now it says it again still, Kyle, paused.
So... Why don't you, if you want to send me the link really quickly, I can put it up?
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
The wonders of virtual meetings.
Okay, Kyle, I just sent it to you. Thank you.
So hopefully that's...
Yeah, I'm actually having issues now.
Oh, I hope that's okay. Yeah. You have a lot of slides to make presentations. It's just the beginning and the end of the fall.
Are they, is it something I can try sharing?
You know what I can...
Earlier, but...
Let me try one more time, perhaps.
Yeah.
No, it's back to the whiteboard, Wendy.
Mm-hmm.
Right back to it.
Yeah, and it shows that it's sharing on my end.
Wendy, are you sharing your whole screen or just the one tab?
I just have the whiteboard. And then it says, it keeps saying, "My screen is paused." Let me try this. Can you see my screen? Do you see the whiteboard now?
Yeah, I see the whiteboard and there's a pencil kind of moving around at times.
How about now?
No, it's still the whiteboard.
No? Gosh, so strange.
You know what I will do is, let me, let me talk through this. And, and I know the board members, I sent you each a document earlier this evening in regard to what I was going to speak about. But I was not going to, the slides were briefer. It was not, I was not going to go into good depth. But what I wanted you to have was have the information so that if you had got questions from the community, you could respond in this fashion. So back when we came back on January 4th, the superintendents were all alerted about the false negative test in regard to curative. So we, as the 23 superintendents within San Mateo County, met with our county superintendent Nancy McGee. And also she had previously met with the county, with the county department of public health, with Dr. Scott Morrow, who is the health officer for us. And also there is Dr. Chan, who I believe his title is like the deputy health officer, if I'm not mistaken. You may know better than I because some of you are on these calls every other week with these public officials. So what they told us was that definitely when we came to the decision to use curative, there were definitely going to be some false negatives and some false positives. That's just going to happen. It's the name of the game when you're doing a test in this fashion. It's self-administered. You don't have a clinician or a health provider that is looking at you exactly in the manner of how you're doing it and that you're doing it correctly. We've all been trained using a video, which we all viewed prior to using the curative test. Plus, every time we get the curative test, we could watch the video because I know one of my directors does that every time. And/or you can look at the sheet that's inside the Ziploc bag that tells you the steps to go through and what you should be doing. So with all of that being said, the county, the county officials at the county health departments for the Bay Area counties of Marin, Santa Clara, Contra Costa, Riverside and San Mateo all agreed that we would continue to use this lab as advised. All the labs will be performing these tests and are necessary to meet California demand. And they also indicated to ensure the most optimal specimen for testing, it is recommended that the test takers be retrained and reminded to do, number one, refrain from eating, drinking or brushing your teeth at least 20 minutes before taking the test. And number two, swab per video instructions will require 30 seconds. Dr. Morrow, who is our health officer for San Mateo County, said that Curative is submitting new data to the FDA. And since Curative does much of the testing, they have a much larger sample size, especially for asymptomatic individuals. He also went on to explain that they expected updated sensitivity and specificity in asymptomatic individuals to be available soon. So there is additional information that they're sending to the FDA, the advisory. And with this additional information, the FDA may not even look at this anymore. So we're waiting for that information. And also, there is another lab that's coming into play for the state of California and they're called Valencia Labs. They are looking for approval, which from my understanding is coming in the very near future. The county office is working on the paperwork that will be needed. So if we as districts determine to use a different test, the county can help us support this one. But it's, that's not come to us at this point in time. Hopefully, within the next week to 10 days, we will learn more about it. But it's the recommendation from those county public health officials that we continue to use Curative. In San Mateo County, even those who started with a different provider are using Curative now, the districts within the county, and we're all going to continue to use it. So as I get updated information, I will make the board aware of it. I will make teachers and staff aware of it and also the community. This Friday, they will, they will be going out, a communique to our community and also to our teachers and staff about this issue. So this was one of the, this was a couple of the slides that hit on these items that I just spoke about. Are there any questions in regard to this from any of you? And as I said, I sent you the exact wording, but I didn't read everything that I have. Well, here it is.
Finally.
Yay!
So let's go down to slide number three. So again, here, you know, San Mateo County is to continue with Curative. Curative made it clear early on of the possibility of false negatives. The Bay Area health officials, as I stated, most new lab tests have similar challenges. Most labs that are coming out are having these challenges. The next slide. Again, the health officers and the counties that I mentioned, which were Marin, Santa Clara, Contra Costa, Riverside and San Mateo, were all going to continue to use this test. And then I talked about the reminders in a proper manner of how to administer the test and the reminders about no eating or drinking, brushing your teeth before the test at least 20 minutes before you take the test. And as I said, Curative is submitting additional information to the FDA, which may make this not a non-issue anymore. And if that occurs, I will let you know right away as soon as that happens. Any questions?
So, let's see. So we do have one speaker card on this particular topic. I don't know if we want to take that first and then questions from the board or if board has any questions. We can do that first.
I'm sure those of you who are, those of you, the board members I'm speaking to, who have the call with the county, and I believe that call is tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, this is going to be probably one of the items on that call.
Yeah, so we don't have a call, we now have them every other week. So we'll have a call in a, you know, in a week from now.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but I, you know, similar to the information that you got, I contacted the county superintendent of schools, Nancy McGee. And, you know, basically you've had the same conversation. So the information that you've shared is basically, you know, the result of her conversation along with the county health officer. So, yeah, I agree with it. I mean, I think we need to continue to use Curative and just try to have staff use it to the highest fidelity possible, you know, with following all the protocols and everything. And that, you know, it is, it is working with, you know, although there will be some false negatives and so...
And then there's a question about how many school districts in the county were all using it. Menlo Park just set up this huge, I want to call it a drive-through, but it's not a drive-through, across from MA where there is, what is it called? The SRI offices or S some, where they have their community members that can, you know, take it on a regular basis there, I forget how many days per week, and also offered it to any of us who are districts that are close to them. Hillsborough started out with another test, but has gone to Curative. So the districts within San Mateo County were all using Curative in some fashion.
You know, I know I'm talking to the health officers along with superintendent Nancy McGee and then you. You know, the important thing is that we're following the health protocols that we've set up. And the testing is an extra layer of protection, right? Because it will give us some information. But the reality is we're doing the daily health forms, we're doing the temperature checks, we're following all the health protocols, the social distancing, the masking, the hand washing, you know, all of that. So people should be protected within the workplace. And we haven't been seeing transfer of COVID within our workplace. It's mirroring what we're seeing in the community. So there are positive cases, but we're not seeing the transferring within our own community, right? Within our own school community.
In our own school community. When a person tests positive, there's this elaborate process that if it's an employee, it's Aaron Caicos at this point in time that is handling it. If it's a student, then it's Antonio Perez. And there has not been a case where it's been one of our employees or students who has tested positive and then it's gone out into the school community where others have tested positive. That has not happened here in the Red City, within the Red City school district.
And I actually think that's been true within our county. And we've had schools who were operating during the summer and had the same results. So they were not seeing any transfers within the community. So if there was a positive result, it was a result of getting it outside of the school community. And then the protections within the school community prevented it from transferring out to staff and other students. And I think, I don't know that we've had any cases of transferring in the county within our school system to date. I don't know, Dr. Baker, if you've heard otherwise or any of the board members.
I have not heard.
I'm always asking that question of the county superintendent. I'm always asking that question of the county superintendent.
Right, I have not heard that either.
Alright, so if the board doesn't have questions right now, should we take the comment from the public?
Sure.
It's actually one of our teachers. So Pam Barish, would you like to speak? We can move you to a panelist. Can you find her, Kyle? Great.
Okay.
Alright, welcome, wonderful teacher.
Good evening, Happy New Year, everybody. John, you kind of took the thunder out of what I was going to say, but I'm going to say it anyway.
Oh, Pam, I know. I know you too well.
Well, then you know what I'm going to say. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. As you all know, I sent you an email over the weekend regarding what I'm speaking about tonight. And I want to thank Alisa, Mike, and Wendy for getting back to me with their responses and information. For those of you on this call tonight, let me bring you up to speed. I am Pam Barish, a kindergarten teacher at Henry Ford School. I, like many in our district, was thrilled back in the fall when R C S D said they would provide COVID testing for their staff. I faithfully coming to school every two weeks to swab and receive a test from Curative Labs. Imagine my dismay last Friday night to read and see the news that the FDA has said Curative is producing too many false negatives and should only be used as a testing option for those showing COVID symptoms, not as a preventative monitor. Does anyone else see a problem? I am duly concerned that when I get an email that says I am negative, I have to wonder if I am really negative. I have enough to worry about between my family, my students, and the world I live in. I would like to know that when I take a COVID test, I can believe in its accuracy as we can at Sutter, Dignity, Stanford, or Project Baseline. They did not make the news in the past week. The feedback that I've gotten from the board and R C S D states that the county is not terribly alarmed and looking into alternatives. At the same time, the news this week has reported many counties and districts in California and in the Bay Area that are opting out of contracts with Curative in search of more effective testing alternatives. I am of the belief that if the Food and Drug Administration is saying something, it has to be backed by a great deal of factual evidence, and I should listen to it, not brush it under the rug as we seem to be doing. San Mateo County and Redwood City specifically are in the midst of a spike, not a decline, and the holiday surge has not even hit yet. I personally have made the choice not to come back into the classroom next week, but I have colleagues who are, and I do come to school to prep and put out materials on a weekly basis. I am imploring all parties to look at the facts. Please make certain that the tests we are using and receiving and offering to our families now are producing accurate data we need to stay safe in the weeks ahead. Thank you for the time to speak. Please stay safe yourselves.
Thank you very much for your comments. I don't know, Dr. Baker, if you want to say anything more. I know that you get, I think you answered some of the questions.
It's just that, you know, as superintendent and as other superintendents within this county, there are 23 of us, we are following the lead of our county health officer. And it's not to say that we're, as Pam alluded to, just brushing it under the rug. We're not. We are also looking at this other entity, Valencia Labs, to see what they can provide for us. And once that is brought to the forefront, then I'll also be bringing that to the board so we can have discussion about it. The next piece of this presentation, if we're done with Curative, is the rapid result antigen test. And if we can go on to a... I think the next slide. So this is another test in which is being highly recommended by UCSF. What this is, is a test that I'm going to pilot within the Redwood City School District at two of our school sites. That's Henry Ford and Taft. If you ask why Henry Ford and Taft, Henry Ford and Taft were the pilot, were the initial pilot schools along with some others. But these two sites at the time had more students and more teachers and staff on the school site. This pilot was brought to my attention back before winter break when myself and a couple other superintendents in the county were asked to attend a virtual meeting that was being presented in Southern California. It is, the group, Binax Now, is a group out of UCSF who has come up with this rapid test that you swab your nostrils, each nostril, for X amount of minutes with someone monitoring you, how you're doing it. And then you put it into a card or an envelope. I have not seen it. We have another training tomorrow at 10 o'clock. And then within 15 minutes, it tells you if you've got the COVID antigen. If you have it, then you have to immediately, you go into quarantine, plus you take a lab test. This is an eight-week pilot. And the test is given two times per week for teachers and staff and for students whose parents allow us to. There has to be an agreement and a signed document saying that the parent has this permission. UCSF has now determined a high level of accuracy with this test. This test costs $5 per each time it's utilized. The cost at this point in time is being picked up by the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. And as you are aware, the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, C Z I, works very closely with the Redwood City School District. They also work closely with Ravenswood. And so Ravenswood is one of the other school districts that's going to be piloting this. Even though there are no in-person classrooms, there are only learning hubs that are sponsored by the Boys and Girls Club. Now, La Honda Pesca Dero is the other school district that is going to pilot, and they are in-person pre-K through fifth grade. And they are starting to pilot next week, if I'm not mistaken. Next slide. Oh, sorry. If you go back, Wendy, I'm sorry. I thought there was one more after this. So after the eight weeks, there is going to be an evaluation among all the school districts who have moved forward and piloted this test. Those districts in Southern California, those districts in Northern California. In Northern California, it's only the San Mateo County, our three school districts, and another district that's in Merced County. If it is as accurate as UCSF continues to adhere to their evaluation and their studies, if that is a test that will be offered to us, I would, at that time, look into it more thoroughly and bring it back to the board for consultation. At this point in time, as I said, it is a pilot. It's for eight weeks. You have a test two times per week. And when that test is administered, I have to make sure that we have a nurse at each of those school sites. Questions?
Dr. Baker, there's one question in the chat. Will this new test be administered two consecutive days or spread out to beginning and the end of the week?
That's a very good question. I'll find that out tomorrow. Myself, along with the administrators from each of the school site, are going to attend a virtual meeting at 10 o'clock tomorrow. And at this meeting, we'll get that information. The other piece is that Erin Caicos, Antonio Perez, and Shanna Lehi will also be there from the district office. And then we'll have our nurses, four of our nurses will be there also along with Andrea Guerin and also Kathy Ibarra to learn more about it and to hopefully, I'm not sure if it's going to start next week, that we come back on the 19th or the week of the 25th. We have to figure those logistics. They did drop off 1,000 tests yesterday for us to start with. So hopefully, I will have more information at our next board meeting and be able to give out information to the community and to the staff in the Friday update letter that comes out next week.
Well, I appreciate your leadership in this. I mean, I've been hearing about these kinds of rapid tests, and these could be game changers, right? So it's really great that we're able to help do some of the work on this. And one other chat question, then we can see if the board has any questions. How far deep in the nose is the test?
That's a good question. I don't know how to answer it at this point in time. I know they said mid nasal. But we'll find out more information tomorrow, I'm sure.
Okay. And then will remote teachers at Ford need to come in twice a week for testing also?
Yes.
Remote teachers as well?
Yes. I'm putting them on the list. And the rationale for doing that is because the remote teachers coming to classrooms to, from what I understand, sometimes they're making packets for their students so that they're there for a period of time. But I want to make sure that while they're there, if anything is occurring COVID-wide, that they should be also able to take the test, just like we do with Curative.
Okay. Alright, are there other board questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Cecilia, you first.
So, John, when you mentioned that you need a nurse to be there to administer the test, what will happen if, say, a nurse is absent for whatever reason? Do you have somebody else that would then be a backup to make sure that staff is getting tested?
Well, the office staff that is there and the principals are also going to be trained in HIPAA guidelines in case that were to happen. But at this point in time with these two schools, we should not have that issue.
Great, thank you.
And then for the eight weeks of this pilot, is that replacing the Curative test? Or will people, or whatever is the replacement for that? Or will they continue to do the regular testing and this is just on top of it?
No, this is not, no, we're not continuing the Curative test. And then remember, testing is only one of the manners to keep us safe. We still need to maintain those protocols. We still need to adhere to them at all times. And you all know them quite well. And so do the teachers and staff who are at the school sites.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if this comment was for now or for the reopening schools part, but the redundancy in the recovery framework and in the school plans for safety protocols, I mean, they seem to me like they're kind of put in there for the failure that testing might have on the edge cases. The masking, the social distancing, the hygiene, the quarantining, the reporting, and the self-reporting. Just, they're all built on top of additive layers on top of testing. And if anyone fails, we have these other things to be able to detect it. So that gives me comfort.
Correct.
And like was said already, we, I mean, we've seen that those work, all those practices that we have in place. We are not seeing the spread in our hubs and the groups that have been open, you know, from October and November on. So, yeah, I don't know if this belongs here or not, but I had somebody asking me the other day how I feel about my own son going back into class on Tuesday. And I said, I feel comfortable with it. I know, you know, we're not seeing the spread. We're catching the positive cases. And those groups are going back in to quarantine. But I'm not afraid of my own child getting sick by going to school.
Alright, anything else on testing? Alright, well, thank you for all your work that you're doing on it. Really appreciate it, Dr. Baker.
Okay, next slide, please. This is something I'm sure everybody's interested in hearing about. This is the vaccine distribution. So to give you a little background, there were four of us superintendents that felt that we need to become involved in some manner with this distribution of a vaccine, especially those of us that are having in-person learning, whether it be in the classroom with in-person learning or whether it be a hub, as we have a lot of hubs throughout our school district that are provided by our partners. And we have a lot of hubs that are Redwood City School District hubs throughout the district. Plus, we have our wonderful staff and teachers that are back to do in-person learning. So we wanted to see, there's four of us, and the four superintendents, you know, the Menlo Park, the Los Laminas, the Portola Valley, and myself. And also, we brought in Hillsborough to see what we could do as a small group with our county superintendent. Could we meet with, we met with her to ask for assistance because alone, we were not getting anywhere. So we asked her if she would please connect with the county health department and would she please connect first with Kaiser. What we wanted her to do was to make sure that our teachers who were doing in-person and our staff that was in-person at school sites would be at the top of the list for the vaccine. So Superintendent McGee met with Dr. Morrow. Dr. Morrow agreed, but Dr. Morrow did say the county health department does not have means to do all this, all these, to admit all these vaccines to our teachers and our staff. So she brought up the idea of Kaiser, and he says, if you can get Kaiser to help us out, that would be great. So Superintendent McGee has been working closely with Kaiser. And at our meeting yesterday, I know she had another one late this afternoon, but we haven't heard anything from it. But if we go in that direction with Kaiser, that means that Kaiser, along with assistance from each of the school districts using some of our nurses, will be able to vaccinate our teachers and staff who are right now doing in-person instruction. With that being said, as superintendents were meeting yesterday, there were a group of us that got together again to ensure a draft of priorities and how these vaccines would be distributed. As Dr. Morrow indicated, we're getting vaccines every day. But there has to be a priority in how one is going to do that. So the first thing that all teachers and staff members will get tomorrow, the principals, I alluded to this today in a principals' meeting, about a survey that was developed by the county health department and also by the county office of education. It's a short survey. It's like 10 questions. You all need, all our staff members and our teachers need to complete this by 11:59, I believe on Tuesday of next week. It will determine the number of vaccines for each of our school districts. The next piece that a group of us superintendents worked on was a priority. And there were six of us that worked on it, but there are 23 superintendents. And so by the time we finished with it and sent it out to the other 23, of course, you can imagine, there's a lot going back and forth on this Google Doc. And we finished it last night, like before midnight, to send it to our... And we finished it last night, like before midnight, to send it to our county office of ed and also to the county health department. What I want to share with you is that I'm very proud of my colleagues who said in the in the preamble of this draft, and as I moved, as I approached the subject, saying that some of our communities um have populations where um we have low SES. People are living in dwellings that are doubling up or tripling up. And so they're more at, they're more um able to possibly come in contact with this virus. So I made the um comment that it should start with those school districts that have high rates of unduplicated students. And that's Redwood City and Ravenswood. To the gratefulness of my colleagues, they agree. And so that's part of the priority is to start with those of us who have the highest number of um duplicated students. As of yesterday, um, we, we, with with Superintendent McGee talking to Dr. Morrow, and also for us pushing that we needed, number one, to get our nurses the vaccine. Our nurses got the vaccine today. So that was a real plus. So now what I want to discuss with you and and just share with you, and it's not, as I, as I bring these items forward, this is not meant to be the final because it still has to go before the county office of ed, the county health department. But this is the manner on how the vaccine will be prioritized, we hope, for the school districts within San Mateo County. So the first, number one is direct, those people receiving the vaccine will be those who are in direct contact with students and families on campus or district office as a requirement of their job. And those examples include our nurses, but our nurses already, they have it, they started, they got it today. All pre-K through twelve teachers and parent educators who are on-site and delivering instruction. All our school site daycare providers, our learning pod staff, our service providers, that's the occupational therapist, that's the um speech therapist, it could be our psychologist that are meeting with students, our school office staff, our site administrators, those campus and yard duty supervisors, the yard duty people, the yard duty supervisors, the cafeteria staff that are working in with with students, bus drivers who are bringing our students back to, back and forth to school, our substitute teachers and our instructional assistants who are working with with students, and our facilities, maintenance and operations staff. And also our librarians who are working with students at school sites. That's the first group that is in that first tier for school districts within San Mateo County. Along with the um piece of starting first with the districts that have the most unduplicated students. The second group would be on-campus or district office and interacting with others, but not with students. And those examples are any pre-K through twelve teacher or parent educator working from campus and using a common campus space, but not interacting with students. District office staff, teachers and staff willing to return once they receive the vaccine and are inoculated. That's the second group. Again, this is a draft. I I just want to keep throwing that out there. And the third group would be other teachers and staff serving pre-K through eighth grade students, working remotely. This is going, the draft that has been sent to the county office of ed and will be, and is being shared with them and also with the county health department. These are the priorities that we as superintendents um moves, are moving forward with and would like it done in this fashion. Dr. Morrow said, come up with priorities. We came up with priorities. Dr. Morrow said, if you could give another health entity to help with the vaccines, go for it. And so we we're doing everything we can to start this movement as quickly as possible. The first piece is when everyone receives this survey that Wendy Kelly is going to send out tomorrow, do it and get it back to us. It takes probably about five minutes. It gives the county office and the county health department the numbers of vaccines that we are going to need to start the, this work right away. Um, Wendy, I forgot to go to the slide, but I've already go to the next slide, but I've already talked about it. So, uh, well, from here, I will just take questions from the board. So it's all, this is all what I, I've done more than this, since we just, the the main piece is all California employees in education to be prioritized for learning TK through twelve in higher education. Next slide. So here you see the county office of education, county health, survey to all employees in education. I talked about that. Districts were going to assess the data and provide the information and how the vaccine will then be distributed. The vaccine is administered at county office education locations. If the piece of um comes through with Kaiser, that's going to really help the school districts within San Mateo County. Of course, we have a Kaiser in Redwood City. There's also the Kaiser in, I believe it's Daly City. Uh, that would help out for north and south. And then the county office locations, they have their location that that's on, that's in Redwood Shores. Plus, there's another location on Rollison Road where there's this huge warehouse where that can be used also as a, as a place to give the vaccines. And then districts will um will support this effort by sending some of our nurses to help give the vaccine.
So any questions or comments from the board members?
I just have one, one quick question because I didn't, I didn't hear where they fell in. Um, what about like district office staff that visit multiple school sites regularly? Where do they fall in line?
They would fall in the first, the first tier.
Okay.
They're visiting, they're visiting school sites where they're going into classrooms, where they're, you know, there are children or they're going into the hubs.
And do we have any idea of how, how soon we can start doing this?
I, I can't say, I was told, but I was, I can't say.
Okay.
I think I can say it's soon.
Okay.
Well, I have a question. Um, I totally understand, everyone is very important. Um, but when you talk about, and again, this is just all, you know, what was, were you mentioning? Um, it's, you know, it's not a done deal, but
Correct.
Um, if the teachers, so I'm wondering, do we even know how many teachers are willing to get vaccinated? And with that said.
That's what the survey's for. Um, that's the, that's, that's one of the questions on the survey.
Okay. So Okay, I'm sorry. So say we do know, um, the number of teachers are willing to get vaccinated. Now, wh- what you just said, the teachers are working remotely would be in tier three.
Correct.
However, a- and again, this is just my thoughts as you were talking. How do we know, or do we know, or would we know if teachers are willing to get vaccinated and come back to the classroom right away? Um, I'm, I'm just curious if now that we are putting the teachers are in remote learning, it's going to, I guess, delay the time of when they will be in the classroom? If they're now going to be at the end of, you know, on tier three versus maybe, you know, one or two? Um, and of course, I understand that the staff that right now is in the hubs um, are people covering and they're with the students. And of course, because they are with the students, they should also get vaccinated. But again, I'm just wondering if switching perhaps, and and again, I'm saying this just as, you know, things were just coming up to my mind, so. Um.
So let me, let me see if I can answer your question a bit. So the cert, and Wendy, you can take the the slideshow down because I think this would be the last slide. Am I correct? I, I think that's awesome. So let me see if I can answer your question. Number one, the survey is very important. Uh, Cecilia, because the survey is going to give us information. There's questions on the survey. Number one talks about, you know, um, are you going to take the, are you going to take the vaccine? That, that, that's one of the questions. Then there's other questions about your, um, which, which health provider you're with and enlist them. And there's questions about your age and stuff like that. But there's also, if you are enough, if you we talked about this at the principals' meeting uh this this afternoon. If a teacher is willing to get the vaccine ahead of the tier three, then and willing to come back to school. And we know that when you come back to in-person learning, they should be on these, we'd have to find, we'd have to know that so that I can make sure that when I create this document that I'm sending to the county office of ed and to the county health department, once all the surveys are done, I'm going to list all those people that are going to get it first. Along, along with the Redwood City School District, they're at the school site, blah, 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 blah. If people feel, and as we heard in the fall, they really wanted the vaccine, if that's what's going to make them come to in-person learning, then that needs to be stated in the survey so that we can make sure that they're one of the first ones to get it in the first tier. And that would bring them back earlier if they so desire. I mean, bring them back earlier. Plus, as I talked to Wendy and talked to principals, once we have more people that are, have the vaccine, we need to go back to the union and say, okay, this is what the MOU said, but now we have others that have taken the vaccine. So let's bring those back too. So that's a whole conversation that we would have with the association, plus teachers that are willing to come back now because there is a vaccine and because they will be um, a priority to get it. Does that help?
It does, yes, thank you.
I think you mentioned this, but in the chat, there's a couple of questions about cafeteria workers and the tech workers. They would be in the first tier, right? Because they're actively working with students.
Right, and parents coming to get the meals and stuff. And then at our, and then at our, our sites, you know, that are, that are opening up, they're actually working with the kids too. Um, it's really important to understand that the superintendent felt, if we did not push, we were not going to get anywhere. We were just gonna, the county was just going to do whatever they want. The county health department. Um, and if we didn't go out and get some assistance from a major entity as Kaiser, uh, that doesn't mean that we can't use like Sutter Health or Pamp or whatever, which we're willing to go to them also. But we asked Nancy to start with Kaiser because for Redwood City, for ourselves, it's our back door. Um, but we felt, especially those of us that were doing in-person learning that we started back in the fall, we don't get this vaccine, people are not going to feel comfortable coming back. So if we can push it and get it out and people get it, I think we can, I know we'll have more teachers that will want to come back into the classroom. I want them back. I know they want to come back. I know you as parents who have the kids want them to come back. Um, so this is a way for us to really um move it forward. And um, I am right now pleased where it is. I didn't think we were going to get this far this soon because we just started, uh, today's Wednesday, last week on Thursday, meeting with Nancy and and the health department, saying that we needed help. And it was only four of us that were doing it. Um, and and she took it and and it, it's, it's moving, it is moving. The vaccines are here. As you know, um, there are, they have, I guess it's drive-in at Maria, I think Warren sent me a a text or an email, I think it's San Mateo.
The fairgrounds?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yes.
And and so, and I believe that's where our nurses went today. And so it's here and it's ready, and it's ready to go. So we just want to start it as soon as possible.
Yeah, and it falls within the equity guidelines too for the county. I think one of the issues is that um there are regulations and guidelines from the federal government and then from the state government as well, and they seem to be changing. So that's part of the issue. The other issue is the capacity of who can come and help. Uh, even though the vaccines are here, not, you know, I can't give it to people, has to be the, the medical staff that are trained. So it's within those guidelines. The other thing that they're um saying and recommending is that just because you have the vaccine, it doesn't mean that you stop wearing your mask and doing all these other things.
Correct.
It takes a while and we need to continue and be vigilant, so. Those are just things that we're going to have to keep uh doing, but I'm pleased to hear that Kaiser may be helping. I know that those forms that you're talking about, other people are also having to fill them out. For the congregate facilities, it has to be completed for each and every one of their patients, for the staff. And it asks if you have insurance. And I think the county will deal with staff that doesn't, I mean, with the population that doesn't have insurance. But everybody's trying to get up to speed and I think everybody has a different way of doing it. So Kaiser was talking about also going to the fairgrounds and um, doing that through there as well. So I'm glad to hear that you guys are making progress.
And we said we'd use our school sites, but they weren't too keen on that. So I said, let's use the school sites, you know? Um, but they'd rather not at this point in time. But um, it's, it's moving fast, it's moving fast down the track. And so I urge all our staff, our teachers, when you get this survey that Wendy's sending out tomorrow morning, complete it and get it back, please, please.
Yeah, and it works by appointment. So once they get the list, then they figure out uh, who has, who qualifies within those specific uh, lists, like you were saying, who goes first. So if they don't have that information, they're not able to give them an appointment. You can't just show up. Uh, because they have to make sure that they have the vaccine, they have the people that can administer it. So that's the other reason why this survey that you're talking about is so important.
Right, and then the information that we are going to submit to the county office of ed and the county health department is really important too. And they have not uh really um told us, you know, how they want it done or or what platform they want us to use, but whatever we need to do, we're going to do it. Because you could go to, say it's at those four locations, wherever the location you feel is easiest for you, you could go and your name would be there on on the list. So um, I'm just, you know, really thankful that the county office of ed and the county health department is really willing, is very willing to work with the school districts.
Well, thank you for your leadership because you were up late trying to get this document done as well as uh, your colleagues for um doing this for our students and our staff.
And I thank our colleagues, my colleagues also for really seeing the concern regarding uh, our population is different than many of the, of the populations within San Mateo.
Mike, did you have a question?
I did, I did, thanks, yeah. Yeah, this is, this is a great update. Thanks, Dr. Baker, I appreciate it. The one thing I didn't, I didn't understand was the difference between the tiering, is that, so is, will it be all tier one for all the districts? Redwood City prioritized within that, then we go to tier two. Redwood City prioritized within that, then we go to tier two across all the districts? Is that the order? Okay, so that is the ordering. So it's really important that if someone is making a decision based upon getting the vaccine, that we bump them into the right priority tier. Okay, to be able to get them. Okay, good.
Exactly. And everyone, like I say, everybody got this survey today. I got it about, I guess it was about 4:30 it came in, 4:30, 5 o'clock, and then I sent it to Wendy. I said, make sure, I'll talk about it tonight. Make sure that it gets out tomorrow morning. We, I talked about it with the principals. But as I told them when we met with them this afternoon, I hadn't heard anything. And then what happens? 4:30 I'm here. So, so here's the survey.
Great. Great job on the proactive steps with the other superintendents. It's great to hear.
All right. Let me see any other, trying to see my colleagues here. Okay. And I know there were some other questions in the chat. I think some of this is still just being worked out. So this was a preliminary update. And just acknowledging that our local superintendents are working together to really advocate for vaccines for our school staff. So, and helping to prioritize what that'll look like. So we can give another update. When you have more information, because I think some of the questions people are asking, some of that's still being developed.
So, and, and the reason why I didn't put. This piece that I had, I'm looking at in front of me is because it's a written document that we sent to the county. It has draft all over it. And I didn't, none of us wanted out in our communities at this point in time. As superintendents, we agreed that we would keep it with our boards and we could present at board meetings. But we would not be sending it out because it could change. You know, what if they get it and they say, no, we don't like what you wrote. But I, I don't think so. I don't think so. But I just want to make sure that, that, that you knew about it and that we're moving forward. I really want the vaccine to come to us as soon as possible.
All right, so.
President McAvoy, you have one other speaker card on this item.
I see that. I was going to ask Dr. Baker, so this particular comment is on the hub. Hubs and pods. I don't know, are you going to be talking anymore? It might be part of the reopening plan. I'm not sure what the specific question is. I guess we could take the comment and then we'll know better unless.
We'll know better when we take the comment.
Okay, well, why don't we go ahead and do that? Let's see, I think it was, was it Michelle Smith?
Yeah, so I've gone ahead and unmuted.
Okay, welcome. Michelle. There we go.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, everyone. I, it might be a little bit more about reopening. I wasn't quite sure where this would fall. So thank you for taking my comment. My, I was listening, a lot of my questions were already answered. And, but I, one of my questions was, and I think Dr. Baker had alluded to it, is. If, you know, teachers do agree to be vaccinated, will the district open more hybrid or hub or otherwise? Classes before the end of the school year? And if there is any, you know, sort of. In the next, you know, before June, if there is, or if the district has created. Sort of a plan in terms of how many students they will bring back to a school site. I'm sure that there are a lot of parents. And there's sort of competing issues, whether, whether it be. The number of students changing on how many want to come back and also being able to hire and fund hub teachers. You know, or have, so it's like, I know it's a balance, but I wanted to see if the, if there was. If you all had sort of decided on, you know, we're going to cap, you know, each school site to like 20% or 30%. Before the end of the school year. And the other is around sort of equity and just making sure that. All, you know, how many hubs are open at each of the school site and making sure that those are distributed equitably. Not just the number of, of, of hubs per school site, but also in which students are being invited back to return. Sort of focusing on the, our most neediest or most vulnerable students. So a lot more questions than comments, but thank you.
So when we look at, when we're looking at equity and you look at the learning hubs. You will see that our learning hubs are more at our school sites that have our most vulnerable kids. That, that does exist. That is, that's what's happening right now. As far to, as far as planning, is there going to be a percentage of students back on campus before the end of June? I don't know. As I alluded to previously. When we were talking about the vaccines, especially if there are teachers now that feel. Well, I was, I'm, I'm doing remote, but if I can be, get the vaccine sooner, I'd be willing to come back. That's a game changer for our schools if that does take place. And so that's why I said that. We would need to be, we would need to work with our association, our teachers association, because at this point in time, we do have an MOU with them. And as Wendy and I were speaking earlier, the more that we know about the amount of vaccines and those that are taking it. That will. Indicate the type of conversation we would like to have with our teachers association. So I didn't get to percentage of them, sorry.
Okay, so let's see, that was then the discussion on COVID-19. Is there anything more before we hop into the reopening plan? Okay, so I think we're on to 9.2 then. The reopening plan.
Yes, and now this is Liz Wolf. Let's see how you can get your slides.
Fingers crossed, everybody.
Oh, great.
Okay, and thank you for Wendy and Kyle for doing all the problem solving. So now it works, so thank you. So, good evening, President McAvoy and members of the board and all of our listeners tonight. I'm here to talk a little bit about the reopening plans. And we have all of our site administrators here as well. So if there are specific questions, they are here to answer the specific questions. Let me actually get this and present most, you have to see the whole thing. So as a very brief review, we began our reopening in November. This is a two-phase plan right now that needed to be approved by the San Mateo County Office of Education and the San Mateo County Health. In that if we are bringing students back to school beyond the small cohorts, which are what are in our pods and our hubs. Then we needed to have a plan that was approved showing that we were adhering to the safety protocols. That are in the pandemic framework. And so this is a review for many of you who have been listening to this for the past many months. But we submitted our plan in October to begin in November and we were approved. And fortunately, we did this because actually in preparation for our reopening for January. All we had to do was update this a little bit and we didn't have to go through a whole waiver process. So that was fortunate for us that we went through kind of this heavy lift back in October. And at that time, we were talking about the in-person instruction that was going to be taking place in November. And these were the schools where the in-person instruction took place. And the grade levels and the number of students who were served at that time. There were a total of 193 students who were served. Through the in-person instruction in our pilot. We, in addition to that, we had our, our hubs that were sponsored by our partners. That had begun in August. And then in October, we also started hiring our own hub managers. We call them our guest teachers. And so we were able to increase the number of hubs that were offered. And so in response to Michelle's question earlier about are we targeting our students most in need. The vast majority of students who were brought back in November, either in the in-person classrooms or in our hubs. Were students who were English learners, students living in poverty, students who were experiencing homelessness or foster youth. That was our priority to bring the students back who are also suffering from connectivity issues in certain parts of town. And we're having difficulty participating successfully in distance learning. We learned a lot from these hubs and as has been mentioned earlier. Because of the following of the safety protocols, although we did have COVID cases in our hubs, there was no spread. And so we felt that this was a very successful pilot, that we were able to take the learnings from this pilot as we move forward into next week. So we're moving into phase two. And again, we submitted our plan to update our original plan for reopening to San Mateo County Office of Ed. And as you have seen, and these are all linked on our website, every single school submitted a plan for reopening. And these plans were developed in collaboration with site councils, with the community members, with the teachers on the staff, the classified members on the staff. And are very, very detailed. And the purpose of that was to show the communities at each of the sites that the. Every attention was being paid towards safety and security for anyone who is returning to school. However, even with this great amount of time and energy being dedicated towards planning around the safety protocols. Because of the surge in, in COVID cases and the fact that our county has moved into the purple tier. Some of the numbers from our original proposal have changed and have gone down. In terms of the numbers of teachers and the numbers of families who are willing to send their students back next week. So the original numbers have been modified and are actually changing every day. They're, and now probably with the news about the vaccines, we'll be seeing some more positive changes coming up. And so each school is handling this at a site level. Which, again, they're here to talk about if you want to ask some specific questions about that, but it has been very challenging for them in terms of trying to balance the numbers. Trying to balance the requests both of staff and of families for either in-person or distance learning. Trying to make up for not having in-person instruction by having more hubs or pods in their. On their campuses, some of our schools are paying for additional hubs or pods through their own site funding. Some are, all of them are also being supported by district level funding. So there's a number of things that are taking place at each school site and then the plan that's attached gives the most current information around that. So as of December, these were the numbers of hubs. And these are, the, the hubs are what we are calling the rooms that are staffed by our district partners or our Redwood City guest teachers. Where there are a variety of grade levels in the same classroom and we're actually trying to target. Not such a wide grade span in a classroom because it's easier for the hub person to manage. Fairly similar grade spans where students bring their computers and plug in and are supported for connectivity and engagement. By the hub leader. They're not being taught by the hub leader, but the hub leader can intervene if a student is having some, some issues or some difficulties. We will be getting pods next week as well, which is in agreement with our Redwood City Teachers Association. That teachers who are teaching predominantly through distance learning. Can manage a group of students in their classroom who may or may not be their own students, but they, it's kind of. Hub-like, but they are staffed by Redwood City teachers so that, again, the, the students will be. Participating in the distance learning from their regular classroom teachers, but will be kept an eye on by a Redwood City teacher. And can get some additional support or intervention as needed. And then we have our in-class. Return. And so again, these numbers change a little bit every day, but as of today, I counted up the numbers. That had been turned in, in the format that was sent to you earlier today. And there's about 1,200 students who are coming back for in-person instruction starting next week. And that's a pretty significant number and we're pleased with that. And again, we, we know that it may change a little bit more, but that's, that's where we are right now. This is some information about our students with IEPs who are going to be served in-person onsite. As well as our preschool program, our preschool, our robust preschool program that, you know, that we have. Has been able to figure out how to provide in-person and at-home instruction also at each of the school sites. So our next steps for phase two, and that's moving forward. It, a lot, it's depending on a lot of conditions and you heard a lot. Brand new, you know, hot off the press information about the vaccine and we don't know exactly what that timeline is, but we know that. John is working as hard as he can with the other superintendents to get this on a fast track. So the vaccines get started because we know that will make a difference to how our families and our staff feel about return as well. We've heard that there is interest in the part of many of our staff and family members to see what happens. Countywide in terms of the health of the county moving from purple to red to orange and that will have an impact as well. We have given teachers the choice to return and so we will get more information when we send out the survey that has just been received today. And then we also know that the governor has made a proposal about returning. Also in a phased-in format with younger students returning potentially beginning of February. And then with a couple of weeks later, students are a little bit older than that and then kind of, you know, staggering that return. Along with some additional funding if we are able to do that. So we are, that hasn't been approved yet. But that was a proposal that he made last week when he was talking about the governor's budget. So the, the protocols that you will see in the return plan for the district. As well as returning plan for each school are based on the four pillars. That, again, we've seen this many times over the past several months that are supported by the San Mateo County. Both the county office of ed and the county health in terms of the pandemic framework. And so each of the schools was asked to respond to a variety of prompts. And each one of these is required. So they are a little bit different. There are some, a lot of this is the same, right? But in terms of the entrance and the egress and the. Areas for recess and there's been conversation lately about. Food and where food might be eaten for the students who are staying through lunchtime. So each of the schools has written their plan in accordance with their particular case. What we know is that, and this was mentioned earlier as well, is that even with a vaccine, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. Right? And so these health and safety protocols must be followed. They must wear masks. They must keep socially distant. They must pay attention to all of these items in order for the students and the teachers to continue to be healthy and safe, even if they've had a vaccine. So there's been, there's a lot of information in the reports about staff training and then the, the testing. And again, some of this will now need to be updated because of, we know now that a couple of the schools will be having some additional nasal swabs. Anyway, so some of those things can be added as well. So there is a link here and I can put this in the chat for the people who. Are interested in seeing, but it's, it's all based on our website. And so then now it's open for questions for, at a district level. And again, if you have specific site questions, we have our site administrators here.
And Liz, before you, you start taking any questions, I want to just, at this point in time, really thank you for the additional work that had to be done. For this reopening plan. We thought it was all done when we went to break and got a few phone calls from the county office. This, we need, we need this, they needed that. Plus, Liz had to create a waiver, especially for those school sites that we didn't have. Any in-person learning taking place last fall. And then another big thank you to the principals who put the time and the energy into creating these plans. One of my colleagues says, when we get on to the county website, we go to Redwood City. And then we hit it and then we, we see your plan, but then we see all the schools. He goes, how did that get done? I said, it was the principals that did the work. It was the principals that did the work. So I, I'm very appreciative, and kudos to the principals for putting these plans together.
All right, colleagues, questions, comments?
I just want to say thank you to Liz and everybody for all the work they put into getting this done. John said, I remember when she first started, and it was just one thing after another, and revision and adding and all that. So thank you so much to all of you for all your efforts and for hanging in there. I know it hasn't been easy, but it is appreciated. And once the students return, you will see the fruits of your labor. Thank you.
I think for me, we start to see the light at the end of the tunnel. Again, I do appreciate everything that everyone has done, from the administration, the teachers, and of course, the staff that has always been there. And again, it looks a brighter future, and you know, hopefully things would get better. But I do want to say thank you to everyone.
Yeah, okay. And Liz, thank you for answering all my questions, and the site administrators that did that, and send them back to me. I really appreciate it. You know, that was really helpful. I, it's just clear the amount of work that went into it and the planning. And I think the thing that makes me really, really comfortable about the plans that I saw there is just that, you know, we talked about it before with the curative testing and the vaccine, just the redundant safety protocols that are part of the pandemic recovery framework, but also the additional work that the sites are doing to, to make sure that it happens, you know, the testing, the masks, the distancing, contact tracing, quarantining, health and safety checks that come in, you know, the screening that happens there. I think that's great. I know that the, you know, again, the curative news is unsettling, but, but I think that these extra protocols in there really should make us feel comfortable. And also that really, you know, we waited, you all had the foresight to wait after the holidays, to bring that back to the 19th. I think that's really helpful. Did I get the date right? The 19th, next week. And the, that, that it's not a compelled return. I think that's a great way to start phase two, because, you know, nobody is, it takes some of the scariness out. I'm really glad that it's focused on the kids that need it, you know, because we saw some amazing artwork at the beginning, but we know that not every student is having those kind of outcomes in distance learning. And I think it's just a reminder that we really have to focus on that, and I really appreciate that. I love seeing in every single site plan, you know, it's a template, but it all, they all talk about equity, and how to address it, and how their plan is addressing, and what those plans are. So yeah, it, I appreciate it. And again, to the site administrators, the site councils that were part of it, and whoever was answering my questions, that came back in this nice doc format that, that put that together, I really appreciate it. Thanks.
It was the principals, Mike, the principals.
They did a great job.
Yep, and assistant principals, side admin.
Yeah, I just want to echo my thanks to, to everybody, to Liz, to Dr. Baker, to Erin and Antonio for the tracing and tracking, and all of the principals and vice principals, and I think Site Council even spent time on these plans. There is so much work that has gone into these, and I'm really proud of our district and the work that we've done to bring our, our staff and our students back safely. You know, as I mentioned earlier, I have, one of my own kids is going back next week, and I'm really looking forward to it, and I'm fully confident in all the procedures that we have in place, because we've seen it working. And my one question, and I hate to even ask it, when are we going to start talking about next year, the fall, and what that's going to look like? But we know we need to talk about it, and.
Yeah, yeah. We've had, we've had cabinet conversations, and I know the principals are very much interested also. So we will start doing that probably about the middle of next month. A portion of our off-site, which takes place, I believe, on Friday, the 12th, if I'm not mistaken, right, Eliana, is, is going to be some of that too, getting direction. So yeah, it's on the horizon. Matter of fact, we thought we were going to start working on it actually last week and this week, but then I went in a different direction with, you know, the, the testing, the vaccine, and so forth. And so that kind, that's kind of taking a lot of time.
Well.
No, it's, it's on the forefront, believe me.
I know, I know it is. And I think the mid-February, talking about it too, will give us more of an idea of what the numbers are looking like in our county, and hopefully will be trending down at that point, and vaccine administration going up. I think that'll help us to make more clear decisions on what's going to happen in the fall, so.
And then also, Martin Cervantes and his staff did an outstanding job with this reopening plan, because there are items that have to be done, and so that the air purifiers, then we have the hand sanitizer that's out there by the playground that's there now, and all the social distancing, what's measured off, it's, it's just incredible, the type, the amount of time and energy that has been spent on, on getting this done, and then all our school nurses helping us out, and, and also moving with us tomorrow with this new pilot test that we're, you know, taking, that we're going to start, you know, either next week or the week after. So it's, it's a real group effort, and very thankful for the, the teachers and the staff, the administrators that we have in the Redwood City School District. Everybody just gets in there and starts working. It's amazing. It's really great.
So I would also like to say thank you very much, and I know we had a whole bunch of questions ahead of time, and thank you, Liz, and thank you, principals, for getting us the answers. I think there was 13 pages of detailed questions. So thank you so much, principals. I know you're online tonight. Thank you for answering all our questions. And, you know, some of our questions, for those of you in the audience, had to do with numbers of students coming back, the equity around who was coming back and who was being served in person. And it looks like about, you know, 2,000 students are being served in these different areas, and that, as you said, Liz, many of them are our highest need students, and so that's really important. And it's a really great start, and with everything else we just talked about, you know, the more success we can have will build success, and then hopefully some additional teachers will feel comfortable coming back, and some additional students and families will feel comfortable coming back, so we can, you know, get back to more in-person. And I did want to just say, I've had a number of conversations with colleagues the last month, and many of them are now looking to Redwood City in terms of, well, what are you doing, and how did you do this, and all this? So I know that nine months ago, six months ago, you know, we got a lot of questions, like, why weren't you do, why aren't you moving forward like our neighboring district? And now we're actually sort of ahead of where many of the districts are in the county, and in the Bay Area, actually, for reopening. So we're now a model for a lot of what's going on. So I want to say thank you to our staff, I mean, all the people that we've talked about tonight, who have done the planning and preparation, and then we're getting in the cat box, you know, custodians and nurses and office managers and food service workers and the teachers and the hub leaders, and, I mean, the list goes on and on. So just thank you. I mean, really, our students are so appreciative, and our families are appreciative. And then Dr. Baker, thank you for your leadership, and all of our district staff, thank you for all the pieces of the puzzle you're helping to put together for everyone else.
And Alyssa, out of the 23 districts, there, there are nine of us that are doing in-person, out of the 23.
All right, and then as we have success, hopefully more will come, come out as well. So, all right, any other, let me see if I can see any other questions, comments, before we move on?
You know, one thing I forgot to mention when I was talking, just wanted to remind the community that our website does have the, the dashboard of positive cases that have been, that we have found in, in our district, and what's happening with those classes. And, and it's, it's really a very small number too, which is, is amazing. But if you go to our website, it's one of the banners that goes across that says COVID Dashboard, I think, and you can scroll down and see the numbers, so.
Yeah, it's updated every Thursday.
Thursday, that's what it says.
So our next item is not, on discussion items, is 9.3, update on the learning continuity and attendance plan.
Do you want to say anything, John? You want me to just get started?
You get started, this is.
Okay.
Oh, we get to see your cat!
We'll do it together. Benny cares a lot about the LCP. Let me, hoping again that this will work.
Ah, gosh. Great.
You are a rock star, Dr. Wolf.
Thank you, not a doctor, but thank you. So it's so great to actually talk about something besides protocols and, you know, vaccines, and although those are absolutely essential, in addition to considering health and safety, we're also moving ahead with great things that are happening in our district. So you may remember, back on September 30th, we adopted the Learning Continuity and Accountability Plan, which is our one-year plan in between three-year LCAPS, right? So our, our LCAP sort of expired last fall, or last spring, and our next three-year LCAP will be due this coming June, so get ready, we'll start talking about that, starting in February. And this was the one-year interim plan that really was meant to address, what are we doing to show learning continuity during this time of distance learning and our accountability? So what I'm doing tonight now is presenting to you what we have done with the actions and services that we had proposed back in September, where we are in the implementation of those particular items. So most of the actions and services, these follow the format of the LCP. Most of them are related to distance learning, and then there are a few more at the end. So as you know, there's been a significant amount of devices and hotspots that have been delivered and shared, and new ones coming up, new, some new devices for our staff that will be disseminated pretty soon. But every child has a device, and every needy family has a hotspot, and as devices and hotspots need to be refurbished, they're brought into the district office. So a lot of, the distance learning couldn't take place without devices in the hotspots. And so they are available TK through eight, and they, for special education and our preschool programs. And this was in, this was actually work that had begun before the LCP was written and approved by you, but just, it is part of the plan. And we are continuing to ensure that the applicant, the online applications are available for, for all teachers, and the parent trainings in technology. So this is really the, the technology piece. So Michelle Ramone, our Redwood City staff, and Familias Zunidis, at the beginning of the year, prepared and presented a number of parent trainings in basics, and basic technology skills, as well as the use of some of our platforms and applications. Another component in just assessing to make sure that students are making progress, you're right in the middle of that, as we speak, we did purchase a diagnostic assessment called iReady, which is a new assessment for this district, not for, there's 10 million users, I think, in the, across the United States. So it's, it's a very commonly used assessment, but it, not only was it a new assessment for us, but it was also the first time we had figured out how to administer a diagnostic assessment remotely. And so when we gave it in the fall, there were a lot of little blips in, in the process, and it's going much more smoothly this time around. It is being administered now to grades six through eight, and starting next week, we'll start with first through five. There are a couple of kindergarten teachers who will be piloting it as well, and so we'll be getting some information about how that goes with kindergarten students. And we feel much more confident that we will get some really good, reliable, valid data this time around, because there won't be nearly as many blips in the administration. And this assessment will be given again a third time at the end of the school year, and it's meant to give information about student progress. It's not a summative year-end assessment like the CASP test, it really is a diagnostic to determine growth and to determine student progress. So we will be able to meet this particular goal as we use our iReady assessment. And of course, there are formative assessments that teachers give all the time, as well as the one-to-one reading assessments that are administered in the primary grades in English and in Spanish. So we will have that information, and I can, now that we'll have a set of data to show growth on this, I can bring a report to you and show information about student progress at an upcoming board meeting. We have a significant amount of professional development that's related to our distance learning programs. As you know, we've reported on this already, we had a lot over the summer to prepare teachers for this year, and we have some ongoing Wednesday drop-ins, because Wednesday is the day that teachers have available to them for planning and to use as needed in order to prepare. So there's a lot of access to our staff development coaches during this time for ongoing support in distance learning. And then there have been a number of kind of standalone professional development moments. We had one today for our administrators in NearPod, but there's been a lot of support for Zoom, for NearPod, and for some of the more widely used applications that we advertise in our weekly newsletter, that you all have the chance to see. But in addition to that, we have also brought in Doug Fisher, who is kind of a, like nationally-known presenter in distance learning and a number of things. He's been around for a long time and has supported a lot of the Roll Out of the Common Core and reading instruction, professional learning communities, guided reading, lots of stuff. And so now he's working on distance learning, and he provided a training for us on our first day back on January 4th, on engagement and clarity and lessons, and how to provide feedback and assessment during distance learning time. And he will be continuing to work with us on our super minimum days, got really good reviews and feedback from, and he worked with all teachers TK through eight, so he had over 400 people in his webinar. In addition, of course, we are continuing to support and work with the National Urban Alliance presenters and coaches, and so that is continuing grades four through eight, with a lot of work around student engagement, identifying student strengths. So a lot of this is really to enhance the, the voice of students and the engagement of students during distance learning. And I, if you have some questions about this at the end, Lynn, to can tell you a little bit more specifically about how this work is going. We have made some, some adaptations to our current staff to support the distance learning program. So one of our coaches has been sort of repurposed to be a full-time distance learning support coach, and she's been very involved in supporting the iReady exam, as well as doing trainings for teachers. She's getting a certification with Doug Fisher to also be able to enhance and extend his particular trainings with us. We are supporting teacher leadership opportunities, and these are two that are just beginning, and that we're in conversation with our coaches to, to continue to develop some more groups. And so we have additional lead learners that has gotten started, that meets monthly, and part of their work is, both, both this and the math group, I have a very strong equity focus, and the digital leaders will also be part of a kind of celebration of learning that will take place in June, where they will be presenting their learning to the staff. And the math lead leaners may not be doing that, but they are looking at how to support other teachers at their site. There, there are teachers from each site who are part of these groups to, to learn from each other, and then we'll take, take the learnings back and support people, the, the teachers, right on their school site. We have also, in order to support our pupils with unique needs during the distance learning program, the LCP funding has gone to support the addition of .5 TOSSAs. As you know, the, the district supports halftime teachers on special assignment at each school site to work as part of student services and to support students who, in a variety of ways, right, in, in attendance, in learning, in social, emotional needs, they are there to support students based on needs and based on data that they receive from teachers and from the administrators. And so at our schools that have higher needs, we added additional .5 to make their, to add to their TOSSA support. Two of these positions remain unfilled, it's difficult at this point of the year, we're trying not to take teachers out of the classroom. We're trying not to take teachers out of the classroom. So two of the positions, we're still trying to figure out how to support those. We may need to support those two schools in different ways. We're also supporting the Orion Mandarin immersion program with the point five TOSSA to support the development of their distance learning program. We have added a point five assistant principal at TAFT that is supported by LCP funding. And we also took another coach and reassigned her to be a focus on full-time newcomer student and family supports. And this is Nina Fazuno, who's with Familias Zunidis. And so there couldn't be a better match in this. We also used, are using LCP funding to add to the administrative assistance support for student services. Kathy Barra is now full-time for student services and she works very closely with Antonio in supporting attendance engagement and in the COVID tracking and tracing. We've, we're also supporting a part-time translator for IEP support, because many of the IEPs now are scheduled at the same time. And so with the amazing translators that we have available, who are translating right now, they can't cover all of the IEPs. So we have some additional support for translation. We also are ensuring that our district and partner hubs are receiving training and materials and support in health and safety for our students, because the majority of the students in the hubs are students who have, so the unique needs are the wording that comes from the LCP, you know, so our students most in need. We have probably, this was back in November, early December, we identified that there were many students, grades five through eight, who were really having attendance problems, serious, significant attendance problems. And so, and we got their names from the school sites and gave them to Familias Zunidis, who made one-on-one phone calls with each one of these students to reconnect them, to find out what the issues were, why they were not showing up for class. And is now going to be starting a series of classes for them and their parents about the importance of school and the importance of being engaged in attending class. We also have a product, a podcast project, which is about to begin, which is going to be awesome. It's looking at the history of Redwood City through the eyes of our newcomer students. And so I believe it's 10 to 12 newcomer students in grades five, six, seven, eight will be part of this team that will be interviewing other students, other family members. This is being organized by a friend of one of our coaches, who is a professional podcast producer and has won awards for podcasts. And so this will be something when this project is finished, we'll be able to bring to you and show to you. We're very excited about this. Just a little picture of people interviewing each other. We also, and I don't know, Linda, if you want to say a little, you can probably say a little bit more about this in terms of the NUA, the student surveys.
Sure. Our, Robert Price, who is of the, our NUA organization, he was one of our mentors, worked with a group of students. This was a project that we actually wanted to start last spring with Dr. Baker, who wanted to get student voice. And so we brought students together. We did a series of focus sessions with them and they came up with a survey. And we, actually it was really interesting and the responses were great, but we had issues of race, bias, stereotypes. It was really powerful session. The groups of students came together at a, on our minimum day that we had in January. Was it January? Can't remember which day it was. I guess November or whenever it was, we did the super minimum day. But they came together, created a survey, we sent it out. We had a little bit more than 300 or so, I think, respondents of students that were sent to fourth through eighth grade. And there was just a great responses. We provided the responses to the administrator so they could review it by their school site. And then what we're doing is, NUA team is also reviewing, coming up with, in terms of kind of themes that have appeared to do follow-up sessions, workshops with the students that, again, NUA folks will lead. It's part of the work that they do in the districts.
Thanks, Linda. So in addition to the distance learning focus of the LCP, there's a section called additional actions. So this is like everything else. And so a lot of this has to do with the mental health and social emotional support and wellbeing of students and their families and, and our staff. So one of the things that we're doing in this area is we are starting a little pilot with an organization that has online weekly emotional check-ins for students. Three of our schools are giving this a try to see, it's a once a week little emotional check-in that the students, they take a look at emojis and kind of click on, on which emoji best represents how they're feeling. And then their teacher looks at that and responds to them. And so it's a way also to find out if there are students who are facing some significant issues. And then they are able to contact the TOSSA or psychologists to get some additional help. So we're giving it a try to see if this is, meets the need that we have beyond just kind of the teachers check in in the homerooms kind of thing, is a little bit more formalized in terms of a way to gather data about how students are doing. And then we're also supporting Essential School Solutions that is already at Kennedy. And so we are, through the LCP, we are supporting the training for teachers at MIT and Clifford for the rest of this year. We also are, have not yet filled these positions, but we're interested in supporting the, the family centers at TAFT and Hoover, who are in need of administrative assistance. And so those positions are being flown. And then we have had monthly, and sometimes twice a month, meetings with Connie Alonso-Frentz, who used to work at one of our family centers at TAFT, who is a trained clinician, who meets with a group of teachers and just talks about how they're doing and is kind of mental health, social emotional support for teachers. And we have a group of five to 10 teachers who attend that on a regular basis. So our next steps are really taking a look at the acceleration of student learning and what that can look like through these different trainings that we're working with, both the NUA and the Doug Fisher, as we determine what that learning loss may look like right now as we analyze the data that we will be getting from our second iReady exam, really looking at what kind of support for mental and emotional health for staff, students, and families as we get more formalized in terms of getting that data as well. And then really looking at the engagement through development through student leadership, teacher leadership, and family outreach and involvement. So those, again, those are areas that are just getting started. And then if you have any questions.
All right. Any questions? Or comments?
Everybody's mesmerized by the question sign, right? We'll just take that off.
Great. All right.
I, I, I went real fast, Liz. Thanks for, thanks for putting this together. And I went through the LCP again to just sort of see what, what had happened in there and come in. There was a question in the chat and it was something that was in there around the social emotional support for family, staff, and the students. You talked a little bit about the students and how we're measuring that, but I wasn't sure if there was anything to cover for, if there's not, you know, that's okay. We can cover it some other time. But if you had something there to cover from that part of the LCP, it would be nice to hear about for the families, because I think that was one of the questions. I know there's the outreach we got into, but I wasn't sure if there were other things.
Yeah. So I think a lot of that is handled by the family centers in, in our district. And so one of the things that we're looking at as well as seeing how, and this, this is not part of the LCP, but we have written a grant to extend and support the family centers, that the community schools through the CDE. And we should be hearing about that in early February. And that is a lot of money that we can use well to provide a lot more support and possibly extend and expand the community schools to Roosevelt. We've been in conversations with Tina about that. So we're just waiting to see if we get a little bit more money for that.
And, and again, Mike, when we have, when we start to plan for the next school year, that's a big piece. That's going to be probably at the forefront is to, like the social emotional piece, not only for our students, because of this time that they've had with distance learning, not being with friends, not having their teacher in person. And then also for families, what's that going to look like? So as we, as we start thinking about the next school year, that's a piece that we should not forget about. Because when we have the ability to, if the legislature approves the governor's budget and we get to move forward and receive this additional funding, some of that funding should go in this area. It's, it's really, really important. Because if you look, if you do any, if you look at any of the latest research, it shows, it goes hand in hand, the learning loss and the social emotional piece for the kid, it goes hand in hand. The piece also that's really interesting to read is the, the pieces of how parents feel discouraged. They were not hired to be teachers. They were not trained to be teachers and they cannot support the kids. It's really hard. Talking with a, a few close friends that are doing it, it's very eye-opening. It's very eye-opening when I have these conversations. And these are, you know, little guys, I mean, second graders that, you know, are rambunctious and, and yet, you know, just, no, I'm not going to do this anymore and take off, you know? And, and so we have got to really look at that piece, not only the learning loss, but the social emotional piece that goes with it. And how it gets, knowing our kids, but our families. Linda?
I will add, one of our community partners is the One Life Counseling that we have at some of our sites. And their counselors work with our families and have provided family counseling about how to deal with stress at home. And they've done sessions for DLEC, our migrant ed families and newcomer families as well. So they've been a great partnership in that, in that regard.
Linda, I think I'm wrong. I think ESS also does family therapies.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, they do. They do. The program that's at Kennedy. Yeah.
And John, do we still have where if parents have concerns or students have concerns, they can sign up somewhere or let somebody know about services?
Right. And there's also a phone number for them. There's also.
And where do they find the phone number and the link or the?
It, I know it's, it's probably on our, that COVID link, but I know Jorge sent out a peach jar. So I'm, I'm sure Jorge is one of the panelists. Let me see.
Andrea Guerin says there's an online counseling request form.
Yeah. But, and I don't know if that's the same one that Jorge had developed or not. There, there were several of them. And it's, it's there for parents.
Yeah. So maybe with the beginning of the school year, it's not a bad idea, either through Peach Jar or through the newsletter, either your newsletter or the principals newsletters, just to remind people of the different services. And if they, you know, are not getting something and want something to fill out the form or call the number. I don't know, Liz, you were going to say something?
Yeah. I was just going to say that it's also the role of the part-time TOSSA that's at the school sites. It's also to ensure that the families get that information. So if any teacher or child has, has a need or a question or an interest in an area, that can be directed to the part-time TOSSA at the school site.
And remember, we're supposed, and I don't know where they are in the process of hiring this, the person for the Redwood City School District. Stanford's supposed to be working with us. And I have, I've pained Lucy Wicks a couple of times. Well, she hasn't forgotten, she hasn't forgotten. But they're supposed to have a physician that's supposed to be assigned to us, a physician, a mental health physician that's assigned to us. And then of course, the graduate students from Stanford, that will, that will help with all the counseling services. So that's in the works, but they don't have the person yet. And I'm sure, it's Alisa and I think Janet, that we were in that group that we're meeting with them last year. And then also again, prior to, right?
I know Sabrina put the link for the counseling service survey and I tried to copy and paste it, but I'm not able to do it. So if someone is able to do it, go ahead.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Oh, and it looks like Jorge and Andrea have also, so, but I think those just go to us, the panelists. So anyway, it might be a good reminder just to get it out to parents and students again.
Right. And we're doing a Communicate Friday. So I know Jorge's on the, on the meeting.
Perfect.
I'm sure we can do that.
Yeah. I think the longer we're all in this pandemic and people are isolated and there's just more need for all of it. There's need all the time and even more need. So. All right, Liz, thank you so much for the update. And I love seeing the student focus. It's really wonderful. The student voice and really getting a better sense of what they need and want. So thank you. Okay. If I don't see any other questions, we'll move on. So I do realize it is 9:06. I don't know if we want to take a quick bio break or a break. I'm fine, but let me look particularly to those staff who are on. Give me a thumbs up if you'd like a break. Okay. All right. It looks like we, we can just power through. So. Okay. I'm just reading the chat as well. All right. So let's see, where are we at? We are on to consent. And as a reminder, we pulled off 10.1 to action. So do I have a motion to approve 10.2 through 10.7?
So moved.
Okay, Maria and a second with Cecilia. Leoni, you want to take a roll call?
Chrissy Lawson?
Aye.
Chrissy Wells?
Aye.
Chrissy Marquez?
Aye.
Vice President Deosloka?
Aye.
President McAvoy?
Aye. So why don't we go ahead and take 10.1, which was the recommendation approval of the December ninth board meeting minutes. And I know that Mike wanted to abstain for this one. So someone else have to make the motion.
So moved.
Janet?
Second.
Okay, Maria does a second. Roll call vote? Roll call vote?
Chrissy Lawson?
Aye.
Chrissy Wells? Chrissy Marquez?
Aye.
Vice President Deosloka?
Aye.
President McAvoy?
Aye. So on to our other action items. 11.1, recommendation adoption of resolution 14, reduction of certain classified services.
Thank you. So tonight I'm bringing to you information and a resolution regarding three positions, an account specialist three, that's in the food service department, an instructional assistant, the maker space at Orion, and a bilingual instructional assistant that falls under Linda's department. These positions actually have not been built since July 2020. I'm sorry for the typo in the board memo, not 2021. And so therefore we are laying off these positions. They do not affect any personnel, because they were vacated, they were vacant at this time. So are there any questions?
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Cecilia?
Second.
And Janet's a second. Okay, roll call.
Chrissy Lawson?
Aye.
Chrissy Wells?
Aye.
Chrissy Marquez?
Aye.
Vice President Deosloka?
Aye.
President McAvoy?
Aye. All righty. See, 11.2, approval of COVID-19 prevention program.
Thank you. So it is a recurring theme about all of the protocols and appropriate health pieces that we have in place for our employees. Recently, over the last month or so, there has been a new requirement for employers to establish a prevention program plan. So that document is attached within the board memo for you to review and have reviewed. Thank you for that. But essentially, we're pulling together all of the pieces very specific to COVID-19 and the tracking, the tracing, the definitions, and our response as a district on how we are addressing cases that occur and our communication response accordingly for employees that may have been exposed. have been exposed or need to quarantine or have positive cases from outside or within the district. As Dr. Baker mentioned, that we have not had work related positive cases, which has been fantastic, thankfully. So regardless, I do want to thank my team, Erin Kekos and Patricia Perez. They did a fantastic job pulling all of these items together. And of course, Antonio Perez and his work in ensuring that we have all of this information in one place. So I am prepared to answer questions regarding this document if there are any.
Doesn't look like there's any questions. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Maria and a second by Janet. Eliana?
Chrissy Lawson.
Aye.
Chrissy Wells.
Aye.
Chrissy Marquez.
Aye.
Vice President Deasilco.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. Okay. Let's see, 11.3, recommendation regarding approval of retirement incentive notification.
Thank you. Each year in human resources, we are looking ahead to the next school year. We were mentioning it a little bit earlier and we turn the calendar for January and we start analyzing staffing and so forth. So with that, this is an annual board memo that we do have recently brought over the last few years to to seek approval for the ability for our employees to notify human resources that they are planning to retire. And that notification really does help us with our getting hiring early. We have a hiring window that starts really February to May for certificated staff and and a little bit later for classified staff. However, it will allow us to receive information back from our employees that can assist with the hiring process. So in this case, the recommendation is a $1,500 retirement notification incentive specifically. And within the board memo, I did note the previous years and the numbers of people that have taken advantage of this opportunity, if they have been exploring this idea and has made have made that commitment. And so there's a form that our employees fill out and that moves the process along. And then in June or July, they receive the $1,500 payment on their check. So for reference purposes, you can see on the board memo, we haven't had too many people, you know, less than 20 or so. However, we do have this budget allocation for this potential situation. Any questions on the early early notification for retirement?
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Cecilia and Maria.
Chrissy Lawson.
Aye.
Chrissy Wells.
Aye.
Chrissy Marquez.
Aye.
Vice President Deasilco.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. Okay, next recommendation approval of personnel changes for the 2021 school year.
So I was thrilled when Dr. Baker called me and said, we have support. As you know, you've heard Erin Kekos and Antonio's name throughout all of the testing, tracking, and tracing process. And you may or may not know, but they also have full time jobs in other capacities, but of course responded to the pandemic as we all have. So it was really thrilling to know that there's been some additional supports available and can be potentially be put in place right away for a director of employee COVID-19, COVID employee and student response, excuse me. And so the purpose for this role would really to assist in the testing, tracking, and tracing process. Antonio and Erin have done an incredibly thorough job and we want to, of course, keep that level and that standard in place. But the support is is really helpful, I have to say. And so Dr. Baker was able to seek a grant through CZI for approximately 90,000 to last through June. And that the job description is attached to the board memo and it describes the various elements that we will need in terms of supports for this ongoing position. So Erin and Antonio are not leaving the situation in its entirety, however, will be a resource for the person that will be in place in this role. Are there any questions about this particular item?
I just want to say I'm very thankful to CZI. They're really a partner. When you meet with them and, okay, what's happening with COVID and where can you be? Where can the assistance come? Where can you get, where do you need assistance? And I just say, and it's a one pager, that's all it was, the job description, Wendy, and then, you know, Redwood City School District and it went and that was it. So I'm very pleased.
Yeah, it's great, too, particularly as we bring back more students and staff onto campuses. The job's just going to get bigger. And I agree, I was actually thinking at some point, I think we'll have to have CZI back and thank them virtually for all they're doing for us. We're lucky that they're in downtown Redwood City.
Yeah, yeah. Andrea Jones is fantastic.
Great. All right, do I have a motion to approve this wonderful item?
I'm moved.
All right, Janet, is that the first motion you've made as non president?
I think it might be.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mike, second, roll call, please.
Chrissy Lawson.
Aye.
Chrissy Wells.
Aye.
Chrissy Marquez. Vice President Deasilco.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, we are on to board reports and superintendent report. Someone like to go first?
I don't have any.
I don't have any either.
I don't know if this one fits in there, but the SMCSBA, new board member orientation over the weekend, I thought was really valuable. You know, it was three hours put together. It's just, it was tight, it was done well, virtually. I got a lot of information out of it and I just, I appreciate the support networks that we have for especially for new trustee members, but just generally being on a school board that are baked into San Mateo County and up through CSBA organization. And Elisa, I know you're very involved in both of those. But I found them, I found it to be a great use of time on Saturday morning and I appreciate it.
So Mike and Dr. Baker and I also had a bond committee meeting. It was Mike's first meeting and he got to meet the team, so.
All right. Let's see, I did want to give an update on the equity administrative regulations. So Janet and I, as part of the policy committee, we've met with Linda Montez and we came up with a plan, actually Linda came up with a plan and we agreed to it. We're going to work with the National Urban Alliance. We're going to have three meetings with the committee of staff and parents and community members to come up with the administrative regulations. We'll also kind of be an equity plan. So I think we'll have some check ins with the board certainly. And then I know in talking to Dr. Baker, we're hopeful we'll have maybe not a draft, but something to deliver for the retreat on February 12th because our last equity committee meeting is the ninth, I believe, Linda. Anyway, so.
Right, the committee last meets on February 9th, so we could, yeah, we could work on something by then.
Yeah, so so the good news is we're going to have facilitation from NUA and their expertise to help guide us, which I think would be really wonderful. So anyway, I just wanted to update the rest of the board on that so you know that we're actively working on it. And then, let's see, I attended the CSBA budget webinar last Friday. I don't know if any of you did as well. The good news is, you know, the budget looks pretty good for California and for schools. And there was a lot of questions around the $2 billion for reopening schools. And I was specifically asking if a district like ours, its basic aid would also be eligible. And the answer was yes, which is good news. And actually, we're going to be ahead of the game if this does go through because we have a reopening plan. Hopefully, that'll help us pivot, be able to apply for the money. And it's actually, it's it's a lot of money. I mean, it's what about $500 a student? So that will be really helpful in our reopening. And then, let's see, I did want to let everybody know, I I hope you've gotten the invitation that there's going to be a CSBA Bay Area Regional Meeting on Monday, February 1st from 5:00 to 6:30. It's geared towards school board members, but certainly if any of your staff are interested, let me know and I can get you the Zoom link. And that'll be with Marty Fatu, who is our new public affairs officer for Region 5 and Region 20 in CSBA. That'll have San Francisco, San Mateo County, and Santa Clara school board members and superintendents. We'll also hear from Dennis Myers, who's the Governor Affairs Director. And so it'll be about legislative updates, probably reopening updates, money, hopefully, and then full and fair funding. So and if you can't make it, I'll definitely be there and give an update. And then I did want to just mention briefly on workforce housing, the survey went out. Thank you, Wendy, for getting that out to all staff. And hopefully, we'll have that going to close on January 18th. So we'll have data maybe a week or 10 days later. And we're hoping to have a closed session, maybe an open session on workforce housing coming up soon, maybe even at the next board meeting. So we'll let you know about that. Okay, that's it. Dr. Baker?
Well, my main thrust the past few days and also last week was definitely with the testing, the COVID testing curative, and then also moving in the direction with the rapid test and then also with the vaccine. So my time has been consumed with those three items. And there's another meeting tomorrow, as I said previously, at 10 o'clock where district office staff, along with site administrators and their staff and the nurses and Andrew here and myself will be attending this meeting. So we are moving quite along and the thousand tests are here. The thousand rapid tests are here. I think, Wendy, they're in the they're in the personnel HR office and the conference room. Yeah. So we can get started. That's it for me.
Great. Actually, you know, one other thing, I just want to give a shout out to the tech department. I was down there the last couple of days because they were helping me set up with an extra monitor and giving me another computer. So because I've got my own laptop anyway to help set up and they spent a good hour with me getting everything set up. And I was able to watch all the the parents coming in with getting updates on the computers and they're just doing a great job helping everybody. And I guess all these computers have come in now for the teachers, right? You're doing those all loaded up. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, teachers will be getting their new computers.
Yep.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, let's see, next item is 13.1, any questions on the information on the San Mateo County Investment Fund? All right, correspondence? I think we've just gotten a couple of emails on reopen questions around reopening. And and of course, the test, accretive testing, if you've answered. Okay, other business suggested items for future agenda? Okay, board agenda calendar, any changes to update us?
No, we just need to add the February 12 on here. So we have that for the offsite.
What?
Say that again?
What time will that start?
It will about 8:30.
Okay, great. Okay, let's see. I think we can adjourn and it's actually 9:24, so that's pretty early for us. Good job, everybody.
Yes, that is great.
What are you doing here?
All right, very good.
All right, do I, I guess I need a motion to adjourn. I'm still learning the ropes here, but.
So moved, oops.
All right, Cecilia made the motion, Maria second. And I don't know, do we need a roll call for the adjournment as well?
Nah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks everyone.